Recording in progress.
My apologies, I left the packet upstairs, so I had to run up and get it. Want to welcome you to the Tuesday, July 15th meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Because of some of the items on the agenda, we're going to do things a little bit differently, and we'll talk about that when we get to the approval of bills. We're going to start with approval of the accounts payable docket, which we typically do. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye. Moving on to approval of bills passed by the county council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove Bill 4725.
If I could just give a brief explanation as to why that's happening. We're aware that St. Joseph County Ordinance Number 154.599 Subsection A6 states that zoning amendments are supposed to come to the Board of Commissioners. But as those of you who routinely come to these meetings know, the Board of Commissioners do not hear zoning amendments or changes to the zoning ordinance. And that's because Indiana Code specifically, Section 36-2-4-E, I'm sorry, -8 Subsection E states that the Board of Commissioners specifically does not have the power to vote on or rule on zoning ordinances or amendments thereto. So because of that reason, this is being removed from the agenda. Again, this is a longstanding practice of the Board of Commissioners. Because of Indiana law, this isn't particular because of this specific ordinance. If you look at the council's agenda from their last meeting, they actually passed a zoning change from ag to industrial. That was not set for the Board of Commissioners' agenda, again, because that's a zoning ordinance and a zoning amendment. So it should not come before the Board of Commissioners, just like the solar ordinance should not tonight.
And because it has been removed from the agenda, those of you who wish to speak about that will be welcome to speak during the public comment. You may know that when we have items on the agenda, we like to have, and we will shortly, have comments prior to our vote. So we will hold on comments on this until the end of the meeting during public comment, just on this particular item. We have a motion and a second?
Yes. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
The agenda has been amended.
So let's start going through, let's take each one of these, the rest of them individually. Just one second. So, 4025 is a salary ordinance. It was passed 9-0 by the council. Any comment or question on that? If not, do we have a motion to approve ordinance number 4025?
Motion to approve ordinance 4025.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have ordinance number 4125, which is another salary ordinance, and that too was passed 9-0 by the council.
Motion to approve 4125.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have ordinance 4225, which is another salary change having to do with the health promotion specialist. Do we, passed 9-0? Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 4225?
Motion to approve Bill 4225.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Transfer Appropriation Bill Number 5325. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Forty-three twenty-five, excuse me. That also, that also passed 9-0.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We don't usually get this much paperwork. And finally, ordinance number 48-25, which has to do with the county tax abatement policy, which I know several of you are here to speak on. I'm assuming that you have signed up for this.
Would you like to go down the list?
Yeah, we're definitely going to take a public comment on this at this point.
First person signed up is Tom Rowe.
Tom Rowe, 26160 Lakeland, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. Before I address this bill, thank you Commissioner Morton and Baxmeyer for attending the military stand-down this past Saturday. I really appreciated it. Now with my, the ordinance. This, this has to do with the bill that was passed out of County Council, fairness and equal treatment ordinance. Will amend St. Joseph County tax abatement policy to remove all references and requirements relating to affirmative action. My next statement or question would be, did Amazon and Samsung object to having, to agree with having affirmative action as part of the St. Joseph County tax abatement policy? Not to my knowledge did they have to have it done, okay? Because they went along with it. So what changed? As cited in the 7825 South Bend County Council meeting, DEI is not the same as affirmative action. My Cruck, former councilperson and others in the audience cited statistics showing disparities that still exist and affect people of color. Councilmember Amy Drake mentioned that affirmative action treats people unfairly and goes against our dearest American principles. My question to her would be, as evidenced by what? Your information. Do you have where you've reached your conclusion? I didn't hear any evidence by her at that point in time, just her statement. The council wavered back and forth while entertaining amendments. Eventually voted 5-4 to pass the action. I am asking the commissioners to vote for the non, for, in regards to nonapproval of this ordinance. I wrote this last night. I wanted to cite just one thing that came about in the newspaper today that some people are not aware of at this point in time. South Bend Tribune, July 14th. Report on DEI cuts from state government. I'm not going to get into that, because they stated in this article with one big exception. The exception was, there are a number of incidents of DEI noted in the report that cannot be changed relating to the state supplying, state supplier of diversity program, which is enshrined in the state law. Minority and women own businesses, enterprises, and Indiana veteran owned small businesses. The Governor's Commission on Supplier Diversity created by state statute in 1983 sets these participation goals for state contracts. These programs are specifically exempted. So my question is, if there's already this type of talk in the state legislature, I would just hope that you would consider those comments too. Thank you for your time and consideration, gentlemen.
Carolyn Moore?
This is Carolyn Moore, 2620 Rock Maple Lane. I wrote here, when we're talking about removing affirmative action, I am greatly going to be affected by this. Not because of the color of my skin or my ethnicity. It's because I'm a woman. Period. And if this gets approved, this is what's going to affect me. I will have to move to low-income housing. I will no longer have annual wellness visits. And due to glaucoma and cataracts running in my family, I will no longer be able to check in, which most likely, like my mother and my father, I will go blind. There are, right now, I am currently financially set. I get a real good Social Security benefits, Medicare. And I work. I still have to work. I'm 73 years old. I reached this place where I'm at because of affirmative action. I've worked for the government. I've worked in IT development. I was able to get the support I needed, having two children. Taking this away means that other women are not going to have this same opportunity. And I am, I really don't understand how anyone on the board can approve that this should be removed. I really don't.
Carrie Bowie?
Good evening. Carrie Bowie, 4410 White Feather Drive, South Bend. I thank you for your work as commissioners, and I ask you to vote no on this bill. Stripping affirmative action from our tax abatement process would silence the very communities that have been historically excluded from opportunity. We're not just talking about diversity of race or ethnicity. We're talking about gender, age, background, profession, language, culture, and lived experience. These are not barriers. They're building blocks for our community. The more perspectives we include in how we solve problems, the stronger our solutions become. If a developer receives a break funded by taxpayer dollars, the least we can ask is that they build a workforce that reflects our community. That's not radical. That's responsible government. Removing these requirements sends a message that inclusion is optional, that hiring is negotiable, hiring fairly, that some neighborhoods' voices and talents are easier to ignore when it's convenient. It damages the public trust in our government. I work with an international congregation of sisters, the Sisters of the Holy Cross. They are stronger because they get input from sisters in Africa, Asia, and South America, just to mention a few places, and from ages 25 to 101. Every day, I see firsthand the way that diversity and inclusion makes a real difference. My daughter was accepted at the University of Notre Dame, in large part because she was a woman interested in engineering. Because of that, she's continued her studies. She's now doing a postdoctoral fellow at Yale and studying the microbiome. She tells me that what makes our gut work is the diversity of bacteria in it. Diversity from a micro level on up makes for better health for all. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Hamilton?
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax, here in South Bend. The operative language in this tax abatement ordinance is really only one. It's 3505B7. The council may grant a base abatement to an applicant who fulfills the following requirement, seven. The applicant maintains a written affirmative action plan. The plan must indicate the positive steps being taken to encourage the hiring, promotion, and retention of, and this is the crucial word, qualified members of historically disadvantaged groups, such as minorities, women, and the disabled. There is no command that you have a certain number of people. It is an urge, a requirement to show that you are in fact engaged in equal opportunity. And this is not in, in opposition to any state policy. In fact, it is consistent with it because our own Indiana Code 22-9-1-2A provides in relevant part, it is the public policy of the state to provide all of its citizens equal opportunity for employment and to eliminate segregation or separation based solely on race, religion, color, sex, disability, national origin, or ancestry, since such segregation is an impediment to equal opportunity. Equal employment opportunities are hereby declared to be civil rights. So we don't have a county council in one of the counties, one of the 92, deciding that Indiana's public policy must be reversed. Certainly not by a 5 to 4 hotly contested vote. I have sent you, I at least have tried to send you, some material on the history of Indiana's problem with discrimination, which is quite deep and long. Whether it got to you guys, I'm not sure, but anyway. History is not past, it is now. We are approaching true equality. All men are created equal, equal entitled by their creator with certain unalienable rights. Hasn't been true in the past for all, but it is becoming true for many and hopefully for all. But as we approach this crisis in our nation's health, we have a strong reaction. Shall we call it an illness? An illness, a problem with people who are afraid of change that is coming to all as opposed to advantages to some. And that's what we must confront. This legislation is absolutely contrary to everything that this country has become to stand for. Thank you.
Dan Camita?
John, while he's coming up, I just want to confirm we did receive. You're very well-written. Thank you.
Dan Camita, 1587 Riverside Drive, 46616. Thank you commissioners for your work, and I know that you have party loyalties. There is no doubt about that. I am asking you, in spite of those loyalties, to vote to not approve this ordinance. I find it ironic that one of the authors of the ordinance calls this fairness and equal treatment. How very Orwellian. As was indicated earlier, at no time during last week's presentation was any evidence ever presented to support the position to erase this language from the bill. What this does do, anti-affirmative action ordinance does, is it removes any impediment to prevent the most pervasive discrimination in history, which has been white, straight, Christian males discriminating against people of color, women, disabled, and the LGBTQ communities. It is a pro-fascist sentiment as well. It is creating eternal enemies where none exists. It is creating the division, not ending it. And finally, as we are seeing at the national level and at the state level, it is whitewashing history by eliminating and erasing contributions of all people in the making of our nation and our communities. I again ask you to vote no on this ordinance.
Trina Robinson?
Trina Robinson, 914 Lincoln Way West. I'm here tonight representing several organizations. I am the president of the NAACP, chair of the Repertory Justice Commission, president of Community Forum for Economic Justice, and president of Community Action for Education. Inaccurate information has the potential to misinform, mislead, or create misunderstandings which can impact decision-making processes, public opinion, and overall knowledge dissemination. No person or person should make a decision for a community based solely on speculation. When decisions are made, I hope it's done so with factual information. The facts are, the unemployment rate for blacks is 6.7% with a 25, with a 25% population. The unemployment rate for whites is 4%, and the population is 59.2%. Approximately 1,385 non-minority-owned firms, which likely includes white-owned businesses, compared to approximately 21 minority-owned businesses, which includes all minority groups. So it behooves me how members of the common council can make statements such as affirmative actions treat people unfairly and goes against our deepest American principles, or it's time to get rid of, get, get out of unfair treatment. And then to add insult to injury, you have a teacher at Penn High School stating he doesn't see injustice based on race, unemployment, or in-promotion. As the president of the NAACP, we handle complaints based on facts. The fact is, we've been out to Penn High School due to racial discrimination more times than we care to remember. The fact is, the South Bend Community School Corporation is currently under a 1980 consent decree because of racial discrimination against black students, and the DOJ refuses to remove the corporation for under this order because they still hasn't been a good faith effort to rectify past discriminations. On a personal note, my 18-year-old daughter, who graduated the top 5% of her class, wanted to attend Bethel and was told she would be better suited at Ivy Tech or IUSB. Not because she have, she didn't have the grades, but because she was pregnant, black, and a single mom. She had a friend who received an athletic scholarship, and her grades were C average at best. It was only when I asked if they prefer athletics over academics was my daughter able to attend. She attended with a great deal of resistance because she was one of few blacks that enrolled in the American Sign Language program, and they tried their best to prevent her from getting her degree. There were numerous other times I had to advocate for her. So I ask you tonight to provide the community with factual information as to how you derive that your decision, not decision based on popularity, political affiliation, and racism, but one that is based on factual information that will substantiate affirmative action is no longer needed in South Bend, Indiana. Thank you.
Steve Francis?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak and, and listening to what we have to say. I was a member of the original group in 2009, the community organizations that put together this tax abatement ordinance. And I want to say that I still vividly remember this being one of the key components of that, that we felt so strongly in this community. It was a variety of community groups, civic organizations, labor, business groups that got together from the ground up that formed this tax abatement ordinance. But this was such a key component, an expression of our community, that we don't want businesses receiving our tax monies or tax abatements that are not going to comply with an effort to employ and to hire disadvantaged groups. This does not mean there's a quota involved. Quotas were outlawed by the Supreme Court long ago. This is about seeking out qualified individuals of historically disadvantaged groups and making sure that you advertise in the correct places, that you really work hard as a company coming into our community or expanding in our community to hire a diverse workforce. To take it away in a piecemeal fashion and an ideological manner and the way that it has been done is outrageous to this community. It's created incredible dissent within the community. And I want, I want to just end with, I ask yourself, even if you agree with this, should this be done by a 5-4 partisan decision by the county council? Are you going to actually allow that to happen? Or are you going to kick it back to the council and say, no, wait a minute? You get a, you get a supermajority of that council. You get some other partisans involved in that decision. You worked this rather than just presenting it to the public. There was no effort outside of the council to involve historically disadvantaged communities, let alone the community at large. This is your opportunity to say that. You can also say, while I support it, I'm sending it back to the council because they need to work it out and have a stronger decision than 5-4 along partisan lines that strip away this important value that we want as a representative of our, of our diverse community to present to businesses coming in as to whether they can achieve or secure a tax abatement. Thank you very much.
Alfred Guomi. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alfred Guom. I live in 145, 14645 Stoneton Court in Granger, Indiana. There's a misconception that affirmative action is reverse discrimi, reverse discrimination. Indeed, affirmative action is not reverse discrimination. Rather, it is the correction of imbalances, of privileges that the majority group has enjoyed for hundreds of years. Slavery, Jim Crow, racial and gender discrimination have denied these privileges of access and opportunity to racial minorities, women, the disabled, LGBT community, et cetera. And even with decades of affirmative action, there are still disparities in access and opportunity in the professions, the trades, and in education. In 1968, Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated. That fall, Vanderbilt University accepted me into his graduate program in French. Without affirming an opportunity for me, I doubt seriously that Vanderbilt would have accepted me because historically, it did not accept black people prior to 1968. Because of the Vietnam War, my student deferment was revoked. I was drafted and spent a year in Vietnam. After my service, Brown University, like Vanderbilt, also affirmed an opportunity for me to finish my masters and my PhD in French. Without affirmative access, I doubt seriously that Brown would have accepted me into his graduate program. Affirmative action did not give me those degrees, gentlemen. I was qualified, and I earned those degrees. I speak French, I speak English, and I can get along in Spanish. That's because I had a good education, access to good education. Those universities corrected years of denied admission to blacks. Our society is a stronger society when diversity, inclusion, and equity are valued and practiced. I urge you to veto this ordinance and to make South Bend a welcoming community.
Pam Clays?
Pam Clays, 1106 Bellevue Avenue in South Bend. Let me first say, thank you, President Baxmeyer, for allowing comment before the bills are voted on. Previous boards have not done that, and it's important, because how do you know how people feel? So thank you. I hope this happens at every Board of Commissioners' meeting from now on. I too urge you to vote against this bill. I was looking at the backup data in the county council packet. And looking at the affirmative action part, there were a lot of things action part, there were a lot of things, strike, 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 one or two things at a time. Here's a whole bunch of them at once. Come on, phone. Oh, come on. This is the section where minority means. What does it mean? I, or number one, black, i.e. all persons having origins in any of the black African racial groups, not of Hispanic origins. Two, Hispanic, i.e. all persons of Mexican, Puerto Rican, Cuban, and Central or South America or Spanish culture, regardless of race. Three, Asian and Pacific Islander, i.e. all persons having origins in any of the original peoples of the Far East, Southeast Asia, the Indian subcontinent, or the Pacific Islands. Or four, American Indian. Oh, come on. It's covering up my little thing here. I don't want that. It goes on, American Indian, Native American, Alaska. I won't fiddle with my phone in front of you, but you get the idea of what I'm saying. What does that leave left? White. That's crazy. This is how it used to be. That's why we have affirmative action. It's crazy that this was even voted on and approved by the council. I urge you to use your executive power in county government to veto this bill. Thank you.
Mike McManus.
Good evening. Mike McManus, 51940 Leilac Road, South Bend. The complete poverty of intelligence, knowledge, humanity, any type of religiosity, and understanding of American and world history that informs this travesty of a bill and reflects on those who drafted it and voted for this travesty is both disgraceful and disrespectful to those of us in the community. This is nothing but a continuation of centuries of racism and intolerance of anyone who is not white, who is not straight, and who has any sort of mental or physical disability. The context for this bill, I think, bad English here, but puts everything in context. These words about affirmative action were struck from a bill that simply required a plan, a voluntary plan put forth by a company who wants to get reduced taxes that it doesn't have to pay to us for the use of our resources. So, why do this? What does this bill benefit? Anyone? Nothing. It's simply a conflation of a misunderstanding of what affirmative action is and the culture war hysteria over DEI. No one benefits from this bill, not our community nor any individuals in it. Some of the quotes that people who enacted this bill have said at the time of the hearing and in the newspaper, we want to treat people fairly. How does this bill treat people fairly? It goes against our deep American principles. Well, I'm sorry, unless George Wallace is your big American hero and the Ku Klux Klan is your favorite group, then this does not go against any American principles. And I find it just a little bit ironic that a professor of history, a teacher of history at the great Penn Harris School System says, we've come such a long way. We'll come to any school board meeting and hear about how far black children and disabled children have not come, right here in South Bend. Please veto this bill.
Chuck Buder.
Solar.
Oh, thank you. That's everybody listed for.
May I speak on twice? Sure.
You're going to speak on abatement bill?
On that.
Not on solar. On abatement?
Abatement.
Yes.
Chuck Buder, 16210 Oak Hill Boulevard. I am a privileged, white, able-bodied, mentally stable male, I believe, who would benefit from this, or I don't know who benefits from this. But as a privileged white male, I hope you're listening to what's being said. It's eloquent, it's accurate, it's impassioned, it's true. Thank you.
That's everybody in the room that signed up online. Cynthia Heckman.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you. As you have been hearing tonight, there is a growing backlash against eliminating affirmative action. The Target Corporation cited its decision to end some diversity policies as a contributor to a sharp first-quarter decline in their consumer spending. The backlash is because one of our deepest American principles is to help those who really need help, not make their lives harder. Having a diverse workforce helps innovation and is essential to long-term success. Ending affirmative action will have economic consequences. Commissioners, vote this ordinance down. Thank you.
Marty Wolfson.
Thank you. Marty Wolfson, 809 Park Avenue, South Bend. Dear commissioners, I urge you to vote no on this ordinance. As mentioned earlier, the affirmative action plan in the tax abatement ordinance does not mean that a company has to hire unqualified workers. It does not require quotas. It simply means that the company has a plan that indicates its efforts to hire, promote, and retain qualified members of historically disadvantaged groups, such as minorities, women, and the disabled. Why? Well, when we still see in many companies and other institutions a lack of representation of historically disadvantaged groups, it seems that something is wrong. Discrimination still exists. It may be intentional, or it may be that hiring officials rely on personal connections or on methods with which they are familiar, such as advertising venues, hiring networks, and places to recruit that already reflect past discrimination. If we take steps to address this problem, talented people could obtain jobs that use their skills and abilities. Companies could hire people who would make a positive contribution to their businesses, and we all could benefit from living in a society where everyone has a shot at a decent life. Thank you.
Charlotte Wolfe. You put in the comment that you wanted to speak if that's for the abatement ordinance. Go ahead.
Thank you. Charlotte Wolfe, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville. DEI includes ramps and sidewalk curb cuts, subtitles and captions on TVs and phones, family restrooms, changing tables in men's restrooms, breastfeeding pumping stations and accommodations, floating paid holidays, pay equity and transparency, parental leave, time and pay, coming back to a job after birthing a child, not having to just accept workplace harassment, work accommodations for a variety of disabilities, flexible work arrangements, size-inclusive chairs and beds in medical facilities, belt extenders on planes. Please vote no for this ridiculous bill. Thank you.
Buder, can you go back so I can see the chat? Rebecca's iPhone.
Hi. Yes. This is Rebecca Goh, and I live at 921 Cottage Grove, South Bend, Indiana, 46616. I spoke at last week's meeting and talked about some things, but today I'm going to talk about another. If you attended last year's St. Joe County Right to Life Dinner, you may remember the emcee. Her name was Monica Markovich, and she's my younger sister. We believe strongly in life in our family, and we want to include all people. Another of my younger sisters is named Veronica. Veronica works at the outpatient surgery center at South Bend Clinic and may have actually made your bed or gotten you new sheets or towels. Veronica also has Down Syndrome. Without bills that, or ordinances, or ways to actively include people like my sister Veronica, she would be excluded. We need to be actively looking to include people. This tax abatement ordinance doesn't say that people have to be hired, it doesn't create a quota, but it does say that companies need to be actively looking to include those who have historically been excluded, and that is a matter of life. Please vote against this awful bill. Thank you.
And that's everyone that's signed up, Mr. President.
Gentlemen, any comments before we vote?
Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity to make this comment before the vote. When I think about the issue of whether an affirmative action plan should be part of the process of this county deciding on granting abatements, it causes me to reflect on some local history regarding the broader issue, which is inclusion. It causes me to think about the statue that we have here in South Bend across from our county courthouse. I'm talking about the statue of Martin Luther King and Father Ted Hesburgh, a Catholic priest and world-renowned president of the University of Notre Dame. I think about what those two great individuals had in common and how they included each other in a fight for justice and inclusion. I also think about my own experience, having gone to St. Stanislaus Grade School in South Bend from first through eighth grade, where I received an excellent Catholic education and where I felt loved and included. And I am very proud to say that I am a member of the last graduating class of St. Stanislaus. I think about people that may have been less fortunate than myself that needed that type of inclusion and did not have anyone to fight for them or provide it. I also think about the great history we have right here in this community of people standing up against bigotry and hatred that was not just based on race, but based on religious beliefs. Of course, I think about a group of young Catholic men, all white, that were students at Notre Dame at the time, and they actually stood up to the KKK and actually fought them on the corner of Wayne and Michigan Street. I know this because I've read about it, and I also had the privilege of attending the exhibit that was put on by the History Museum at the library, which was right across from where they fought the KKK. Now, we all know that the Ku Klux Klan is anti-Jewish, anti-immigrant, and anti-gender equality, and anti-Catholic, to name a few. These young Catholic university men had the courage to stand against exclusion and to fight for inclusion. And so, with that said, I have an extremely hard time turning my back on the efforts of so many people who came before me and who fought for inclusion, not because the law required it, but because it was the right thing to do. It is a matter of conscience and courage to know this truth and to live by it. The Catholic principles learned in my formative years at St. Stanislaus are the same Catholic principles that guided the formation of many young people right here in this community. And so, to the public and to myself, I have a difficult time understanding how those principles can result in two opposite viewpoints. The one that was supported by Father Hesburgh, who stood in solidarity with Martin Luther King, and the one that I see being pushed through the county council now, who I was a member of for 32 years and president 20 of those years. It is true that government and religion need to operate in separate lanes. That's what our Constitution says, and I took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and I will stick by that oath. But I can't help but express my very extremely strong feeling that we should not turn our backs on so many people that have made this community a great community because of inclusion. Do we encourage inclusion to honor those like Father Hesburgh or Father Steve or Father Casey at St. Stan's, who taught me many lessons? People who had courage in this community to fight for inclusion, or do we turn our backs on them? And for those reasons, I will not support this ordinance that was passed by the county council. Thank you.
Mr. Hazen.
Mr. President, I'm not making a motion right now, I just want to make a statement that I don't like this bill. I am tempted to veto it, but I'm also tempted to pass it. And the reason that I would want to pass it is that if we veto it, it goes back to the council, they don't have enough votes to override the veto, so it will become law. If we pass it, I've been told that there is a committee working to make a better bill, and they can do that within the next couple of weeks, hopefully. So I'm torn between that. So that is where I'm at. I sat during that meeting, I watched that meeting, I had a hard time hearing that they had not talked to anybody like Mrs. Robertson or my fellow colleague down the diocese here to get their opinion at all. They came up with this, and I think, in my opinion, they changed an ordinance that had to do with an abatement, and they didn't change anything to do with the tax abatement, just what to do with affirmative action. So, as I said here, I've not made my mind up yet, Mr. President. I'll be happy to listen to anything you have to say.
Well, I agree a lot with what you said because this is something that just came to our attention, that another ordinance is going to be offered to the county. And as Mr. Hazen said, well, as Mr. Hazen said, if we veto this, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road for six months because another ordinance can't be brought up until the six-month period has elapsed. Well, you can, I don't like this ordinance. I was disappointed when the council had the opportunity to amend it, and they failed to do so. to do so. Again, this is, as Mr. Hazen said, this is something we were just notified of by the council within the last day or so. And we didn't discuss it, because we're not allowed to make a decision at other times. So therefore, I would rather see this, see the competing ordinance come back. Sure. Not usually, but in this case, yes, you may ask a question.
I don't understand why you just can't say no. That's what I don't understand.
Appreciate that. One more, this is not supposed to be a debate, as you know. We've let people have their say.
Thank you, Dan Caruso. They had their chance. Brian Tanner tried to get them to say, "Let's take this back to committee, let's talk about it some more." The makers of the motion refused. They had their chance. Say no.
Okay. I said we would hear a couple of comments, and we did. This will be the last comment.
I'm sorry, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity, but what they're proposing, that they can go to the Human Rights Commission, or go to downstate and file a complaint. If you look at how many cases have been brought to fruition from the Human Rights Commission, it's zero. By the time it gets to the state level for the right to sue, the damage has already been done. And so, what they're proposing is not something that is going to be beneficial. Any way that you look at it, it is bad. And I can only pray that when your children look back at what you did and the legacy that you left, that you took a stand for something that you know the community as a whole has said is a bad idea. I can really accept anything that you give me, if you provided me with factual information. You're not providing me with factual information. What you're providing me with is something that the Republicans, and I'm sorry to be political, but it went along political lines, are saying this is what they want. Is this what we want for our community? We are so much better than this. And I know that each of you are better than this, because your children, one day, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, because I fight for mine, to know that I stand firm on what is right, not what is popular, but what is right. And sometimes I have to stand alone. And I know that you guys have the potential to make the right decision and stand alone. Thank you.
Having heard the comments, and some additional comments, do we have a motion? We've stated, at least you and I have stated, why we don't like this bill. We want it to be brought back, as was just said. Commissioner, Councilman Tanner urged the council to send it back, take it back, and rework it. I don't want to wait six months to see this come back.
I'll make a motion to veto Bill 4825.
There being no second, I will make a motion that we vote yes now, for the reasons stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
No.
Commissioner Hazen?
Yes.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just a minute.
Well, thank you, thank you for, you're listening. It's a step in the right direction. But this is just the beginning. This is not the end.
I hope not. Okay. We do have other items on the agenda. Next is approval of the Client Service Agreement Fee Amendment with the Horton Group. Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of release and settlement agreement to Jason Howard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, under IPG, recommendation of the rejection of the 2025 annual highway material bid for fuel, oil, lubricants, and miscellaneous materials.
Good evening, Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor of the county city building. What we have here is, when we received our annual bids a few weeks back, and after review of those bids for the fuel, we had six bids that were received, none of those bids met the requirements as set forth in the bidding documents, and the submissions weren't, they didn't submit, they either didn't submit all the information back, or it was not submitted in the required format or way that it was specified. We request, we recommend that all these bids be rejected, and this will be bid again at a later date. And currently, we will, we've talked with our existing fuel vendor, and they're okay with us continuing service with them until we get this, so we're not going to be without gas.
Any questions?
Mr. Matters, I thought you and I had talked about that you were going to light a fire under these guys to make sure that their bids were properly submitted.
We did, and...
I'm kidding, Scott.
They just don't...
Man.
Fuel bid, light a fire.
You got it.
I got you. Took me a second.
There being no further questions or comments, do we have approval to reject the 2025 highway material bids?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with St. Joseph Regional Medical Center for Narcon Public Supply Station Placement and Operation.
Yes, Renata Williams, Director of the Care Unit, Department of Health, 2nd and 4th Lobby Building. We are requesting your approval to enter into agreement with St. Joseph Regional Medical Center for the installation of a public access in a lock zone cabinet, which will expand the access of this life-saving treatment in the community. This MOU has been reviewed and approved by Department of Health Council. This initiative is grant-funded by two separate grants. One is from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, which provides the funding to purchase the boxes, and then the Department of Health, which actually supplies us with the Narcan. We already have a successful public access box installed at Memorial Hospital, and then if we can secure this agreement, this will complete our goal of having two boxes at both health systems in the county, in addition to the 22 other boxes, smaller boxes that we have at community partner sites. So I'm open to any questions.
First of all, all kidding aside, I can't thank the Health Department enough for this outreach effort, and because of the situation sadly of drug abuse in not only our community all over. And unfortunately, I witnessed a person who was in the process of overdosing, and I saw, it was at a gas station right on Mayflower and Western, this was several years back, but I actually saw, a nurse happened to be on site and saw the actual administering of the Narcan, and it was just, I was shocked. So, not only that, but I want to commend the Health Department, under the state, the ridiculous, far as I'm concerned, state cuts to provide public health, your department has rearranged, realigned, and come together to still provide outstanding service to our community.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you, that means a lot to us, we really appreciate that.
And I mean that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the MOU with St. Joseph Regional Medical Center? Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, moving on to public comment, anybody wish to comment?
Good evening, Commissioners, Dan Caruso, New Carlisle. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the earlier event. I know it's a hard decision, and I don't happen to agree with it, but that's why we have debates. My issue too, well, I've got a lot of issues, but my particular issue I'm going to speak on tonight is of the traffic situation at State Road 2 in Larison. I sent an email to the Commissioners, to the council, to Mr. Matters, to Bill Shalio, about what I observed as I came from a medical appointment, and I pulled over in one of those remaining driveways on the north side of 2, just east of Larison Road. Because as I'm coming home from the appointment, I see a no-left-turn sign off of State Road 2 down to Strawberry Road, which I had been calling for for months, to stop all the left turns into and out of Strawberry Road. They had done that on the south, on the coming north on Strawberry Road, there's supposed to be no left turn from Strawberry Road on to State Road 2, headed west. So I sat there for 30 minutes. I got to tell you, I saw seven trucks, in excess of 20 cars, in those 30 minutes of people continuing, the trucks just, one of them went in, and because it was a new sign, I was thinking, he was coming from South Bend, it was a new sign, and I'm thinking, well, I might have missed that too, so maybe, but then I followed him into SBN 201, the south side of Amazon, and I saw him take care of his business, come back up Strawberry Road, and make that left turn onto Western Avenue, State Road 2 to the west. It's being completely ignored. I contacted Officer Noonan, I contacted Bill Redmond, I heard from Officer Noonan, who said there's patrols in the area, there's extra patrols in the area. It's not patrols that are the problem. The last truck that I saw coming up Strawberry Road sat there, I timed him on my phone, I've got a video of it, for three minutes, waiting, he could have gone east any time, but there was a lot of traffic coming from back over my shoulder headed west, and he sat there with cars lined up behind him. And I got out of my vehicle at about 2 minutes and 30 seconds, and stood with my phone like this, all of a sudden, he decided to go east. It isn't signage that stops him, we have to have a presence there, we have to have police presence at that intersection, all the time, during daylight hours, or the minute they know nobody's watching, most of them, not most, a number of them, don't care that there's a no-left-turn-lane sign there. We need, we need permanent, during daylight hours, officer, school-crossing guard directing the traffic. Thank you.
Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township, and thank you for taking comment on the solar property value guarantee, since it's not on the agenda. I, you know, I hesitate to make this case, I only learned of Mr. Garrett's analysis this morning, and read it, and it looks sound, but I haven't had a chance to consult with attorneys that I know of downstate and nationally, that are very concerned about this kind of ordinance. I do think that there's some contention here, that perhaps, because you've been advised by your attorney, but we had such disagreement at the county council meeting between attorneys, about the process, about where it would go, from the council attorney to the Area Plan Commission and Mr. Garrett, that I do want to read something. A property value guarantee, this is from Guida Law Firm, is not a zoning decision. It is typically a promise made by a developer or seller to ensure that a property's value will not fall below a certain level. Zoning decisions, on the other hand, involve regulations that dictate how land can be used and developed within a specific area. So, I mean, this isn't definitive by any means, but I do think that we can look at this as being improperly presented, that this should have been a separate ordinance in some sense. It's not about rezoning, it's not complicit with what I read, and I'm not a lawyer, but I am going to consult with some, that I read in the very good description that Mr. Garrett provided. And it may be, it's moot after this point, but, you know, I mean, because I think that it will go onto the Area Plan Commission, but not after then, we're not sure where it goes after that. And if it's denied or disapproved by the Area Plan Commission, there was some dispute or question about whether it even goes back to the council, I don't have clarification on that. If it's approved by the Area Plan Commission, does it go back to the council? Mr. Zales said they needed the last word on it. Hold on, Mr. Morton.
I wasn't trying to interrupt you.
Okay, okay. And I would like to say, this is a very, very serious countywide ordinance, not a zoning regulation. This honeysuckle is $164 million investment on a square mile, a little over a square mile property. And what this does, and removing yourself from the decision-making process, maybe you had to, means that you're not able to weigh in, except as a citizen, or as a commissioner at the Area Plan Commission. And it's a very serious signal sent to the rest of Indiana and to the country, that I think you would be well-advised to weigh in on in some fashion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Francis? If I may, if the Area Plan Commission denies it, it does go back to the county council. I was just, you asked that question.
Right, thank you, okay. So you're absolutely certain of that?
Yes.
And if they approve it?
It's, it doesn't...
It's done, it's a done deal.
It's a done deal.
And that's...
Correct.
That's correct.
And that's, of course, why I think backing off of this is a mistake, but that's more, I'm over my time limit.
But we have the best attorney this side of China, and he told us we couldn't do it, so...
Anyone else? Almost missed you, Mr. Buter.
Chuck Buter, 16210 Oak Hill Boulevard. If it comes to you, I'm opposed to ordinance 47-25. It is capricious in singling out solar energy systems, it is unfair to the industry, and it will decimate jobs. It imposes a costly burden on them that other industries do not have to pay. It's contrary to Indiana state law, and it denies county residents improved quality of life. I sent you an email last night, I don't know if you got it, but I'll resend it, since we have a little more time now, that explains this and other things. The people who want it are legitimately aggrieved by having development spoil their bucolic environment. But the county brought that on, and for example, with the IEC, when they decided to, what they then wanted to be the 11th largest industrial complex in the United States, as they promoted it, and plopped it in the middle of farmland. So the industry is coming, and what we have to decide is, what industry is it going to be? So right now, solar's just the first, I mean, it's zone, solar's coming, and it's the first, and that's what they see. So solar's been bearing the brunt of it. Those data centers have a 50-foot setback, and so to answer that, they gave, they required that the solar have tenfold that, they have to be 500 feet. They have to be 500 feet, they moved it from 250 to 500 feet, tenfold what a data center has to have. So in 20 years, those people are going to have industry all around them. So you have to decide what industry do you want around you? Do you want all the data centers? Do you want the power plants? Do you want the heavy industry and things like that? Where, you know, the, I spent a lot of time on the county, and the, you know, the long-range comprehensive plan, and the one elusive thing that they, that all the developers, and even in the county government, the developers cannot provide is quality of life. And all of their developments that are coming here, name one that's going to really bring quality of life to the people. So after this rule went down, I went there and hung out and watched the sun go down and the moon come up, and as I'm standing by these solar panels, they are quiet, they're dark at night, they have no light pollution, they have no water pollution, they have no air pollution, they have no smell, they have agro-voltaics, they have grazing animals underneath them, they've got fireflies, pollinator plants, these are the three things that the solar brings. And so you're going to say, okay, we're going to crush solar, and then you're going to realize, you're going to look back at solar as being the good old days, when instead of destroying the industry, it's like, wow, I wish we had solar 200, I'm sorry, 500 feet away, instead of another data center 50 feet away from my property. And so there are going to be other times that solar's going to come up, I appreciate your support of the solar industry. Thank you.
Sky Metters, 1550 Byron Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to give some follow-up information on Mr. Caruso's comments earlier. Thanks for that email, Dan, and, you know, those emails and those types of, that information that we get does not fall on deaf ears. One of the things that I noticed in that email that you'd forgotten to add was indot, and I sent it to him. That, that is indots intersection. You know, the decisions that are going on there are indots. Now, you know, we have traffic coming off Strawberry and those things. Indot, you know, has their reasons for not putting a permanent barrier there to keep the left turns and so forth from happening, it could be access for emergency vehicles, those types of things. I, you know, it, they, they have their reasons for doing that, they have their reasons, and they've mentioned it quite often, for not putting in a traffic light there. But, you know, we are actively evaluating the traffic situation out there, you know, on a weekly, daily basis. We're not just letting it go and, you know, see, you know, like throwing it up in the air and see what happens. One of the other things too, is I am sure you mentioned you contacted Major Noonan, I'm sure that he will look at his patrols and see what he can do. One of the things that I even heard actually today, I was talking to a resident out there, is there's no police patrol out here, I haven't seen them. I, I hear that in winter, I haven't seen a plow truck, it hasn't been here. Just because you haven't seen it doesn't mean it hasn't been there. And I know that they are actively patrolling out there, and in, and it's, it's a lot of vehicles to place in one area. And so we're constantly evaluating based on what's happening in each project, each phase, on how we can best minimize the disruption. I mean, we're not going to be able to get rid of it, it is what it is there. But we're constantly looking at that, and I appreciate your email, it's good to know stuff like that. And I just wanted to make that comment that, you know, that is, that is something that is constantly on our radar to take, to take a look at, and, you know, emails like yours helps, so, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for your work on our behalf. I'm trying to understand the process. You mentioned it in your, your reason for voting yes...
I don't mean to interrupt, but if you could state your name and your address, please.
I beg your pardon, sir, I beg your pardon. Elizabeth Smoyer, 4101 Glen Allen Court, Apartment 2A, Mission Walker, 46545. By approving it, and you made mention of that you, that the Commissioners have been, is that, you know, the Council has been in touch with you, that there's amendments they want to make to it or something, or further developments that they're working on? Do I understand that accurately, on that bill? Okay. Now, what happens now? Are you going to follow up with them, or do they follow up with you, or do we need to advocate for that? Can you explain to me, because it's, it, I, I've, maybe I'm reading between the lines, but I got a sense that you may be able to make some changes to it?
Yes.
What you already approved?
The Council.
And, and would that, would that have to go through the process of the, the Council and the Commissioners again?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, but...
And I, I never speak for my two esteemed colleagues, but I, I can say for myself, I will be following up. Matter of fact, that process is already in place to follow up with the Council, to work on a revised ordinance, if you will.
And, and that would have to be voted on all over again?
Yes.
So this, this one that you agreed to tonight?
Yes.
Would be deleted?
Yes.
So do I understand that accurately?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. When Dan was talking about the traffic out there, I live in Warren Township, I live about on Quince Road, if you go down Quince, about four tenths of a mile, then I'm back on the opposite side of the Channel Lakes. I, maybe you can get a question or answer from somebody, or you can direct me to, but the traffic still remains horrendous, okay, from Quince Road into the bypass, okay? I had, I was running 15 minutes late for a doctor's appointment last week because I made a mistake, okay, of getting on there around 6:15 in the morning to get to a doctor's appointment. So I had to apologize for my doctor at that point in time. I guess I'm asking the county Commissioners if you have any idea when that section from Quince to the bypass will be completed, be more easily drivable? Thank you.
I know I said that this is not a debate, and that my comment on this is not a debate, but just to reinforce what was said, we have been informed by the indot that they intend to make intersection improvements to four other intersections. Two on State Road 2, two on 20. The exact details have not been released yet. MACOG voted at its last meeting, and I'm on the MACOG board and voted for it, to include that in the transportation improvement plan. But it's just a placeholder at this point, but it does get improvements, further improvements. I know that's not exactly what you asked, you wanted to ask when the last phase of the improvements to State Road 2.
I just appreciate your feedback, because the new one now, because the other part of the Commissioner's is, Mayflower is blocked off. And so we've got that too, also up there, and that, the paper said that would be approved from 2026 too. And there's a lot of complications, because traffic will also, most of the time anymore, might be Quince down to Edison, ruin that one.
I should have asked you to go back to the podium only because, that's okay, that was mine, on me, that was my fault, because we don't, don't always hear what, for the record, what was said, so...
Appreciate your response.
Anyone else in the room? We're down to just a few. How about online? I see we have two, two or three hands raised, two, I think, no, three. Charlotte, your hand is up. Ms. Wolf?
Hi, Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road in Lakeville. And I also sent you a letter about the solar ordinance. If it should come back to you, I would encourage you to try and have some say over that. This is a large industry that could bring a lot of economic development to the area in a way that helps rather than hurts. One of the things that I said in my letter was that solar projects are already required to screen and setback from property lines, and they can and should employ multi-use options such as raising pollinator plants. However, that is up to the property owner. In, in fact, the ordinance that's already passed regarding solar states that pollinator plants are required. So if we have a setback already required, we have screening already required, and pollinator plants, we worked on the comprehensive plan to try for this exact type of development, rather than the 50-foot setback for the data centers. I'm also looking at setbacks in general, and if the Commissioners would consider doing a proactive setback, and I don't know exactly what it should be, but I'm going to throw out 2,000 feet setbacks for all permanent concrete industry, that's, I guess, solar not being an industry that covers the ground, is so much better. But I remember back in, I think it was 2015 or 14, that Lakeville was, was approached by a farmer to do a CAFO, a confined animal feeding operation. And we could not even get the setback increased from 50 feet to 600 feet. And that particular industry wasn't, was called a farm, it was called farming, and it is not, it is industry. 10,000 hogs, or, you know, cattle, the waste that's produced, that is not just normal farming. We should be proactive in our setback requirements for those types of industries, and we could list the, the industries if you wanted, but if you wanted to have some kind of citizen commission, I would be happy to chip in. Thank you for all you do for our county.
Thank you. And Cynthia, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Regarding the anti-solar bill, you can't ignore what Chamber of Commerce President Jeff Ray said in the county council meeting. Placing this set of restrictions on one type of company does not make good business sense. As we all know, many things affect property values, including supply and demand, the national economy, and so forth. For example, what if interest rates go up? Then it would be more expensive to buy a home, and home sales nationally might slow down whether or not there's a solar farm nearby. The solar farm would have to pay for something totally out of its control. As for the bucolic rural lifestyle, ask folks in New Carlyle whether they would like Amazon to guarantee their home values. Should the metal recycling business on Sample Street guarantee the property values of homeowners within a mile of their business? Maybe homeowners near highways should have similar guarantees. Many of our local farmers put a lot of toxic chemicals on their crops. Should they be compensating their neighbors? This sounds like a Pandora's Box of overregulation to me. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Before we leave, I will just note, since I had the opportunity to speak to at least one person about the solar ordinance, not in an email, but in a old-fashioned snail, a voicemail, a voice message, and please note on the press release that we put out, and I'm just speaking for me personally, not putting my fellow Commissioners on the spot, but I intend to go to the APC and make a statement. There is a lot to be concerned about with that ordinance. So I would urge, and we said it in the press release that we sent out, we would urge people to attend the August 19th Area Plan Commission, that's the, just like this, the third Tuesday of the month. Sometimes when there's a lot, well, we had it once already this year, when we had a large number of people, or they anticipated a large number of people, we shifted things around. I would not like to change our night meeting again, however, may, perhaps we can do something with the day meeting. We can talk about that going forward. But just want to encourage people to express their opinion, I don't feel that you were, our action tonight allowed a full expression of comments.
Adam wants to move the APC meetings to 1:00.
For those of you online, if you didn't quite hear that, Mr. Caruso indicated that the Chairman of the Area Plan Commission is perhaps suggesting making their meeting start earlier to allow adequate time before our meeting. We will work with the APC, if that's okay with my fellow Commissioners.
Mr. President, I would like to accompany you when you go talk to the APC.
Sure. Yeah, I just didn't want to...
Yep.
...box you in.
No, not at all.
Having said that, I think we've come to the end of the meeting. Do we have a motion to recess?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Close enough.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmire?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
One question. I was wondering why we didn't have anything to untable?
We didn't.